To call a meeting order, this is the annual town meeting of the town of Sturbridge. It's the 282nd annual town meeting of Sturbridge, which was formerly known as New Medfield before it became Sturbridge. Everybody, my name is Michael Caplet, and I'm the moderator for the town. If everybody could please rise, we're going to do the pledge of allegiance. The flag is over here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. As we have done many years now, we're going to have a moment of silence. We began this, I was telling some people tonight, after the 9/11/2001 terrorist attack. We had a town meeting that night. We began a moment of silence, and that was 19 years ago, and we continue to do it, and very unfortunately, we've added to it. So we want to remember tonight the U.S. servicemen and women who are dead in the Iraqi war operation, Iraqi Freedom, and Afghanistan Operation Enduring Freedom, and the supporting operations. As of the Department of Defense, this morning, the total was 7,043. Also want to add, all the students, teachers, administrations in school that have been the victim of shootings. We also want to add the, this year we're adding the, very sadly, the over 125,000 people who have passed from the coronavirus, and we want to give special thoughts to the nurses, doctors, and the first responders who have been combating this from the outside and continue to do so. Last but not least, we have four local residents who have passed since our last town meeting in January, and those are Edward Cludier, who was on the agricultural committee from 2016 to 2019, and as many of you may remember, was a farmer and a local gentleman; James Damian, who was a member of the Rod and Gun Club and Sportsman's Club in Brimfield, as well as the Italian-American Club; Carl Lofgren, who was one of the founders of the Whistling Swan, and Carl's important because he and his wife Rita helped to develop Sturbridge into the restaurant town that it's become, and they did a wonderful job over there. And last is a wonderful lady named Irene Zumelis, who lived over, I believe it's Gifford Road, right off of Fisk Hill Road. She did many things. She taught CCD for years, and was just a great lady. So we just have a moment of silence for those purposes. Okay, thank you. You can be seated now. If we could, I'm going to ask everybody on the stage here to identify themselves. We have some new people here. We have a new selectman. I want to welcome him to the board, Mr. Donegan, Ian Donegan. If we could start at the far end over here, just kind of identify yourselves nice and loud. Do we have a microphone?
Michael Supernight.
Okay, and you're a selectman. Great.
Ian Donegan, selectman.
Chase Kabinski, selectman.
Mary Blanchard, selectman.
Jeff Burgess, town administrator.
Jonathan Eichmann, town council.
Okay.
Lynn Gerard, town floor.
Jane.
Jane Bubon, town planner.
Todd Miller, economic development and tourism coordinator.
Nice and loud, everybody.
Todd Miller, economic development and tourism coordinator.
Chief.
Tom Chamberlain, finance committee.
Ann Henry, financial administration.
Leslie Wong, senior center director.
All right.
Chris Garrity, account accountant.
Becky Jenner, contribution manager.
George Jackson, VPW director.
Okay, thank you very much. With all these masks tonight, I thought it'd be a good idea to do what we've been doing the last few years, but kind of tell who is who here. Okay, now, finance committee. Under the town charter and bylaws, I'm supposed to appoint members of the finance committee three a year, so over three years, we have nine members. This year, I am reappointing Joni Light for a three-year term and Michael Hager for a three-year term. I have one term, one three-year term available. If anybody's interested in it, they should contact me. We could talk about appointing you to it. So give me a call if you, if you need me. Okay, let's see. Procedural issues, okay. All the non-voters that we have, could you please stand and be recognized? If you're not a voter in the town of Sturbridge. If you're not a voter in the town of Sturbridge, okay. Now, by law, I'm supposed to designate a special area for you to sit, and I'm going to sit you right where you are, so please just be seated, okay? You're not supposed to vote. If any of you voters catch any of these non-voters voting, please let me know, and we'll deal with them. Okay. Speakers are to be recognized. They're supposed to be, approach the microphone. Now, a couple of things. After each speaker, we're going to have the microphone cleaned tonight, so you don't have to worry about inhaling somebody's bad droplets or whatever it is that might be in the area of the microphone. They should be cleaned and ready to go. When you do speak, please approach the microphone, give your name and address, and you should address your comments to me, the moderator. When possible, we like if we have an argument or a discussion, I won't call it an argument, a discussion, we like to alternate. In other words, have somebody that's in favor of the article and somebody that's against the article. The reason for that, it's just more interesting to hear it that way. Makes it a little more of an interesting discussion. Tonight, kindness and courtesy. Talk about this every year. Never had a problem with it here, and I hope that continues. Just one thing, I always quote, "It is not genius nor glory nor love that reflects the greatness of the human soul. It is kindness." And that's Henri Dominique La Cordaire, a French philosopher, and I think that's a good motto for us to use. For procedural, we're going to be using Town Meeting Time, the third edition, supplemented by Robert's Rules of Order, where that applies, and the common sense, if he has any, of the moderator in resolving anything else. Substitute motions, we talked about earlier. We prefer to see them in writing. You can't make them verbally. This makes our life a lot easier if we have it in writing, then we know exactly what you want. I think we're going to wrap this up tonight. I don't think we're going to have a second night. If we do, we'll deal with that problem later. If we go long enough, we're probably going to take a break about 8:30, 9 o'clock, so all of us here on the stage can go do what we got to do, okay? Do we have any children here tonight? I don't think we do, do we? I don't see any. Well, okay, then we don't have to warn anybody about how to take care of them. If it comes to a close vote, we're going to appoint counters. The counters will be members of the audience, voters who are going to help me count out the votes, make sure we do it fairly. Now, a couple of things. The fire department wants everybody to take a moment and realize what the local fire exit is. There's one over there, one over here. You should know that just in case of an emergency. Now, secondly, everybody should have a seat. It's impossible for us to count votes if you're walking around and standing around, so. I know it's a little bit of a hassle tonight, but we're trying to get everybody squared away as quickly as possible, and it went pretty well. On that topic, I want to thank Lynn Gerard and her staff, who've done an absolutely wonderful job in preparing this facility for this meeting and getting everything taken care of and everything well thought out in advance. Okay, we have a few motions we have to take before the beginning of the meeting, but before we do that, I think the selectmen have some presentations they want to make.
You're younger than I am, that's why I had you come up here. Okay, Tom, this is from the town. It's presented on behalf of a grateful community in appreciation for your 35 years of dedicated service to the town of Sturbridge. Presented by the Sturbridge Board of Selectmen. Congratulations and thank you. Absolutely. Okay, is Tom Ford here? Okay, we do have a presentation for him, but we'll have to get him some other time. Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, we've got some proposed motions for the rules of the meeting. The first is that one, all speakers shall be limited in any oral presentation to four minutes in length, which period may be extended by the moderator in his discretion for good cause. Speakers who are not registered voters may be limited to less time in the discretion of the moderator. And I think that's the only motion that we have tonight. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
A second? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your, what are we going to call these cards tonight, Lynn? No, she's not here. She left. All opposed? Carries unanimously. Okay, now, let's see where we are here. Let's see where we are. Okay, just a few instructions on general procedures. When we're going to get to the budget article, that's the one you probably need the most instruction on. What we do with that article is we read the total for the department. We don't read the salaries and the services and all the other things. We read the total. So if nobody has an objection to the total for that department, we'll just put that down and be dealt with. If they have an objection, a question, a hold, they should put their hand up and say, "I have a hold on the wages of making this up, the police department," when we get to it, and we'll go back to that person and call on them and ask them what their question or their concern is, then we could deal with it from there. The reason we want the person's name and address is, number one, to find out who it was that had the concern or the hold. Somebody just yelling out, "Hold," we don't know who it is, sometimes hard to tell. And secondly, it kind of gives you an idea, gee, Mary Smith is a pretty reliable person. If she has a concern about this, I should listen. Or Johnny Jones is not the most reliable person, and maybe I shouldn't listen too much to what Johnny has to say. Okay, so that's how we do it with that. We talked before about the control of the meeting. The moderator controls it. We talked about kindness and civility. We've talked about the exits. Now, the warrant itself. Mary, Lynn, do you have the warrant? Thank you. Okay, I've had a chance to look at this previously, and I'm satisfied that it's been properly prepared, executed, posted in the appropriate locations, and the return is affixed to it. Do I have a motion to accept the return of the warrant?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second, I hear it. Any discussion? All in favor? Raise your salmon cards. Is that what we're going to call it, salmon? Salmon. Thank you. Any opposed? Seems to carry unanimously. Okay, now, we have accepted the return. We're going to, we have a motion to waive the reading of the warrant. Rather than read every single article, you have your books with you that tell you what the articles say. They also tell you what the recommendation of the finance committee is. Do we have a motion to waive the reading?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Now, the finance committee has gone through this and has made recommendations on each and every article as they're required by the town bylaws, and they've had meetings, and they've had motions, and seconds, and discussion, and everything else. So they've become the main motion. They've already seconded previous to coming here tonight, so I'm going to suggest that we should accept the motion to waive the necessity of seconding their main motions. Do I have that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, we're doing great so far. Any opposed? Okay, fine. Okay, now, we're going to have a chance for some people to say 10,000 words or less. Key word is less. First, first one's going to be Kathy Neal, chairman of the finance committee.
Yes, thank you, Mike. Thank you.
We need a microphone, Kathy.
I do have one. Can you hear me?
Okay. Can you people hear her?
Can you hear me? Oh, if I keep it up. Thank you for participating in tonight's annual town meeting, which obviously is taking place under unusual circumstances, but as always, your voice and your votes will decide the ways your local government will work to meet its responsibilities. The impact of the COVID-19 pandemic on the town's finances required the finance committee to recognize the uncertainty in future revenues, both locally and on the state level. Accordingly, the finance committee found it necessary to revise its recommendations rather late in our process. Although our review was shorter than normal, we have collectively spent hundreds of hours on the budget and warrant articles to develop our recommendations. It may be that later in the year, as revenues become better known, that there may be future adjustments to the budget. And two, with the exact parameters of education of our youth in the fall is still unknown, and the cost thereof, there may be a need for changes in that budget as well. Despite the fluid situation, we took three factors as ironclad to try to preserve the current tax rate as close as possible to 1902, even with the many unknowns that we have. Second, to try to protect the town's stable credit rate, stable outlook credit rating, which means that we pay lower interest when it borrows funds. And third, to safeguard the community's quality of life. We hope that our recommendations achieve those objectives. In order to maintain the tax rate at or near its current level, it is proposed that we use free cash of $550,000 and stabilization funds of $570,000 to achieve that goal. We have also reduced parts of the line item budget, the capital budget. We've lowered our usual contribution to OPEB and recommend no contribution this year to the capital stabilization fund. As the coronavirus pandemic continues to unfold, we will monitor the developing situation for potential frugal actions in coordination with both the town and the school administrations. At this point, we do wish to thank for their knowledge and cooperation, the town administrators, the finance committee, or the finance director, sorry, all of our department's heads, and of course, the superintendent and finance, associate superintendent of schools. The town charter assigns the finance committee to do your legwork and present to you a full set of recommendations. The decisions are now yours to make. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Next, we're going to hear from Mary Blanchard, chairperson of the board of selectmen.
Okay, good evening, and also thank you for coming to the meeting this evening. If you have not had a chance to read online or pick up the warrant book during the week, there may be some things that confuse you. Please feel free to ask. Somebody will know the question, the answer. The board of selectmen, like the finance committee, the town administrator, the finance director, department heads, have all been working diligently to present to the town the best budget we can in these tough times. Again, thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, I guess we're ready to start the town meeting. Double check, make sure we're on the right page here. Okay, Article One of the town meeting is Town Reports. Man, I've told this story before, many towns, you go to the town meeting, and they sit there, and the fence inspector and everyone else gets up and gives a long, detailed explanation of his or her activities for the past year. In Sturbridge, what we do is we prepare that white booklet that you picked up when you came in, gives the reports of all the different town departments. You can look at that, that'll give you all the reports you need. The only, there are two exceptions. One is the Electronic Voting Committee, and the second is the Community Preservation Committee, which is not, I'm sorry, that is in that book. I take that back. That report isn't there. So do we have a motion to accept those reports?
So moved.
So moved, thank you. And we have a second already. Any discussion on it? All in favor, raise your salmon color card. Any opposed, raise your salmon color card. Carries unanimously. On the topic of Town Reports, I mentioned the Electronic Voting Committee. Last January, January 27th, we established at the special town meeting, an electronic voting committee to study the possibility of coming back with electronic voters, little clickers we could vote with instead. Well, two things occurred after that meeting. One is I had some health problems, and I was laid up for a couple of months, and that went right into the pandemic. Because of the pandemic, this committee could not meet or do anything. So we had that original at the January meeting, had said that they would report back by this meeting with their report, and unfortunately, there is no report to give. So the report of the flight out, the Electronic Voting Committee would be to extend the time then to give a report until the next annual meeting next June. Do we have a motion on that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none, raise your salmon cards. If you're opposed, raise your salmon cards. Carries unanimously. Okay, Article Two. Now, this is the Community Preservation Committee report. Although it's in the book, it's a separate approval of a recommendation of the finance committee is to approve this report as written. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Carries, appears to be unanimous. Article Three. This is to give the Community Preservation Committee some operating money. The amount they're looking for is $20,000. Do I have that right? Yeah, $20,000. Recommendation of the finance committee is to approve the article as written. This is not money being given away for any purchase or any other purposes, for their own operation. Posted stamps, call it what you will. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Seems to carry unanimously. Okay, Article Four. The Community Preservation Debt Service. This is that the various properties they've bought over the years, they have to pay back the money if it's borrowed. Some of it was, some of it's from our appropriation that comes from the, on top of the tax bills. So this is to pay the loan part of it. Recommendation of the finance committee is to approve the article as written. Do we have any discussion on it? Hearing none, all in favor, raise your salmon cards. Anybody opposed? Seems to pass unanimously. Okay. Article Five. Okay, now, we have a bunch of Community Preservation Committee articles to basically buy different stuff, I want to call it that, and the suggestion was made that we could hear them all at once, just deal with the whole group of them. And I just wanted to see if that was something that, that the body wants to do, or you want to deal with these one by one. If anybody has any question, if we decide to deal with them all together, you have questions in any one article? Sure, we can sure talk about it. Problem being, of course, is that if you're opposed to one article but in favor of the rest, it may affect the voting on all of them if you're voting against it because of the one article. Any feeling on this? We want to just do these one by one? I don't see any strong emotion to go forward, so why don't we do them one by one? Article Five, Community Preservation. This is gravestone restoration. Now, this has been going on for a while, as I remember. This is just a continuation of it. Recommendation of the finance committee is to approve the article as written. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor? Anybody opposed? Seems to carry unanimously. Article Six is again, Community Preservation. To purchase storm windows for the town hall on top of the historic windows that are there already. Recommendation of the finance committee is to approve the article as written, eight to nothing. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor? Anybody opposed? Seems to be unanimous. Article Seven. The Community Preservation Recreational Trail Riverlands. And that's been approved by the finance committee to approve the article as written. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. By the way, this money's coming from the Community Preservation Funds, not directly out of your tax burden. So it comes from there, and they only have so much money to spend it a year, but this is, this is how they're asking to spend it this year. Okay, no questions? All in favor? Anybody opposed? Seems to carry unanimously. Article Eight, Community Preservation Recreational Trails Master Plan. And that's, again, approved by the finance committee, eight to nothing. Any questions on this? Yes, sir. Guess you have to come down to the microphone. We'll wipe it down. It's been wiped down already. We'll wipe it down after you're, after you're finished.
Tom Chamberlain, Sturbridge Trails Committee, 25 Bennetts Road. Mr. Moderator, we have a substitute motion for that.
Okay, and I think you're right. I think you do have one. Okay, now, the recommendation of the finance committee was to approve the article as written, and the sum that was originally sought was $10,500. The substitute motion, that the town take no action on Article Eight. Now, no action in Sturbridge parlance means that the article is just going to die. Mr. Chamberlain, can you tell us why no action?
After the report was published, we were notified by the Conway School, which was the school we were going to be working with. It's a graduate degree program in outdoor environmental landscape design. Due to COVID-19, they are suspending classes for the fall to the spring semester, so there won't be any students to do the work, so we just don't need the money this year.
Okay, I guess that makes sense. Okay, so take no action unless somebody else has yet another substitute motion. That'll be the end of this. I don't see anybody else. Okay, that's the wife. She's not supposed to speak here for a second. That's all right. If no one else has anything to say on this, this will just die of its own weight. Okay, that's Article Eight. Article Nine. Community Preservation, Construction of Recreational Trails at the Lead Mine Parcel in Restoration of Burgess Discovery Trail. Recommendation of the finance committee is to approve the article as written. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Anybody opposed? Seems to carry unanimously. Could be going for a record tonight. Looks like everything's passing unanimously. We'll have to see what happens here. Okay, Article Ten. Community Preservation Trail Construction. Recommendation of the finance committee is to approve the article as written. Any discussion on this one? For funding of signage, materials, and labor for trail construction on all the different parcels that they've acquired over the years. Hearing no discussion, all in favor? All opposed? Carries, appears to be unanimous. Article Eleven. Community Preservation Property Boundary Delineation Long Pond Parcel. It's to appropriate $4,070 for doing boundary delineation. I think that's called surveying, isn't it? I guess. A long pond parcel. And the recommendation of the finance committee is to approve it. Vote was eight to nothing. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Article Twelve. Community Preservation Outbuilding Removals. That's to remove a couple of buildings. One is the three outbuildings in the Lead Mine Parcel and the Heinz Cabin were to take any action relative to those things. Recommendation of the finance committee was to approve as written, eight to nothing. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Anybody opposed? Seems to carry unanimously. Article Thirteen. Community Preservation. Library Window Restoration. Recommendation of the finance committee is to approve it as written. They're looking for, let's see here, $35,850. Right, yeah. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Again, seems to carry unanimously. Article Fourteen. Community Preservation. Restoration of Historic Portraits by William Willard. These are portraits that I believe are in the library, Joshua Hyde Library. The vote of the finance committee was to approve the article as written, seven, zero, and one abstention, seven, zero, one. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Seems to, is that an opposition or just a late, I guess, is there some opposition over here? I didn't see it. No, guess not. Okay, passes unanimously. Fifteen, the town budget. Okay, here we go. This is what we talked about before. I'm going to read each department's total again. If you have a question, a hold, an objection, a substitute motion on any of the items in there, when we get to that line, we're going, you should put it, if it's the police If it's the Police Department, we'll pick on the poor police. Mention it, and then you say, well, is it the wages, or the purchase of services, or what it is? We'll try to narrow it down. We'll go through the budget. All the things that are not opposed, not on hold, we'll try to vote through together. And, uh, if somebody from the Finance Committee could volunteer, just give me a hand getting the holds here, because sometimes, okay, Mike's going to do it. Mike Hager's going to help me with that. Make sure we have all the holds, if any, maybe we won't, who knows? And we'll go through it and see how we go. Okay? Everybody got it? So when you put a hold, I'm going to ask you for a name. I asked somebody to write that down so we can get it. Okay. Okay, we start off. Let me start off. The first department is the Board of Selectmen. Their total is $3,600. Second department is the Town Administrator. That total is $248,919. Third department is the Finance Committee, $7,288. Next department is the Town Accountant, $101,529. Next is the Board of Assessors, $148,579. Next is the Finance Director, $266,430. Turning to the next page now. I'm on page three of the book. Next is the Town Council. And, uh, that's for $100,000. Information Technology, $187,174. Town Clerk, $112,674. Elections and Registration, $33,531. Conservation Commission, $99,602. Town Planner, $182,999. Zoning Boards of Appeal, $590. Turning to page five. Economic Development Department, $21,168. Facilities, $123,167. Town Hall, $48,313. Center Office Building, $41,842. Senior Center Building, $27,910. Joshua Hyde Library, I'm sorry, yeah, Joshua Hyde Library Building, $23,330. Safety Complex, $86,395. Nursery School, $3,700. Eight Brookfield Road, $900. Going now to page seven. Police Department, $3,122,154. There's a hole there? And what, what is the, what is your name, please? Okay, did somebody get that? Joanna Spiro? Do I have that right? Joanna Spiro? Okay, what's, what line are you holding? I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Overtime, okay, we'll get back to that. Okay. Fire Department, $100,000. That's something before I lay it down a bit or put something down here, or I'll forget that we discussed that. Let me just get this here. Overtime. Got it, okay. Fire Department, $1,757,670. Building Inspector, $130,576. Sealer of Weights and Measures, $5,350. Inspector, the Electrical and Plumbing Inspector, $3,900, I'm sorry, strike that. $53,399. Tree Warden, $6,893. Education. Oh, yeah, yeah, you're right. You guys are right. That's right. Okay, let's go back to the Tree Warden. Tree Warden is $27,603. And, no objection, I guess, okay. Education, this is, uh, both the Burgess and the Tantascot Town Chair, Department of Public Works. We're on page nine now. Department of Public Works, $1,103,911. Town Road Maintenance, $6,000. Snow and Ice Removal, $220,000. Landfill Recycling Center, $289,361. The Board of Health, $110,113. Community Health, $4,000. Inspections and Testing, $47,338. Council on Aging, $142,835. Veteran Services, $67,276. Joshua Hyde Library Operations, $513,636. Recreation, $102,981. Trails Committee, $210. Historical Commission, $2,050. Debt Service Principal, Principal Part, $1,085,000. Debt Service Interest, $369,269. Going to page thirteen. That unclassified department, that famous unclassified, Central Purchasing, $319,000. The grand total, have, if we were to approve everything here, if we approved it, we have one item that's up on a hold, which, forgetting that for the moment, would be $35,248,388. Okay. All the items that there is no hold on, the only one item on hold, that's the police overtime, am I right, Mike? Yeah, okay. What we're going to do is vote on all the other articles, there's been no hold on. Let's get rid of them, and then we'll go back and talk about the police overtime. Okay. Recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve it, because all the numbers I just read to you were the Finance Committee recommendations. So therefore, any discussion on any of these articles? Well, it shouldn't be, we've had an opportunity to have it. Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Appears to pass unanimously. Now, let's go back to the police overtime. Ms. Spiro, she was here a minute ago. Why don't you come down and address your question, concern, hold, whatever it is you have?
Hi, Joanna Shapiro, 50 Westwood Drive. So I know that a lot of other members of this community that didn't feel safe attending tonight's indoor town meeting during a pandemic wrote to, I believe, the Town Administrator with some questions and concerns about the police overtime budget in particular. While we could debate the police budget in general, I just have some general questions about this 9.4% increase in the police overtime budget, which is really disproportionate increase compared to everything else in the budget. So I'm hoping someone could speak to that.
So you have a question as to why the budget is so high, is that what it is? Okay. Mr. Bridges or the chief? Who wants to address that? Why don't you use the microphone, chief? There's a microphone right there. Hold on.
Testing?
We'll wipe it down after.
Testing?
There we go.
The overtime increase is due to contractual obligations.
For events, or?
The bargaining units go into negotiations with the Town Administrator, and they settle on an agreement, and ultimately that impacts the overtime.
So before anyone's worked an hour, it's already determined to be overtime? There's not a way of shuffling resources, staff, um, to avoid this? You know, it's over $400,000 of overtime. That's more than a fifth of the salary budget for the police in general.
Correct. We also added a, an additional position, which will create additional overtime?
I would think an additional position would reduce overtime because you're not having to have the same few staff, people serve the same purpose. Now you've got a whole extra staff person to reduce that burden. I just, every year, the police overtime budget increases and increases. I think we use the police in so many situations where a police officer's not needed. They're needed for many, many things, but, but not for every town event, every little detail operation. There could be private security firms. Just seems, seems really disproportionate to use that amount of money for overtime.
Well, what, what does happen is, uh, each position has benefit time attached with it, sick time, vacation time, and there's a fill ratio. Dispatchers is 100% fill rate, we cannot go without. And right now, we go 45% fill rate with our, with our patrol officers. So there are certain shifts that do not get filled, and we'll run short-staffed, but we have a 45% fill rate, and that's what we've been going on for many years now. But the benefit times, you know, we got, we got officers with a lot of, uh, vacation time, and when we backfill those, those, uh, positions, it causes overtime.
Some of the other components to the overtime, it's not just backfilling a shift because someone's on vacation. We also have training days. When an officer's out on training and you have to backfill the shift, that increases the overtime. When you do have the community event, that adds to the overtime because it's not part of a regular duty shift. Also court dates. Uh, if an officer is in court, we have to backfill that shift. So there's someone on the street doing that job. If we have vacancies, we have to bring people in on overtime. So it adds up, and it's a, it's a large number. And you always look at, can we bring someone on? So just so you know, bringing on an officer's great, but for us to do that, either we hire one from another agency, which we're constantly looking for to do that, or you send one to, send a person to the academy, and you pay them six months to be at the academy. So there's a balance there, right? And then if we add an officer, it's just not straight time. Right? You've got to look at the benefits. So a benefits package for an officer's $30,000 a year with healthcare, pension, all those different pieces, so you're balancing all those items. Overtime versus another officer. If we could find more officers, we would lower the overtime because we're not backfilling. So it's always a balance, it's always a struggle. Every city I've worked for has a struggle with overtime because you want to make sure you have enough money to keep your officers on the street, but there's always an issue with the overtime. So certainly understand, and every year you try to balance those numbers.
And I appreciate those additional points. It just seems to me, and, you know, I understand the reason for some overtime, but at this rate, you could probably hire four more officers with benefits for that overtime cost. It just seems like we should be working on a solution to this so every year it doesn't go up and up and up. You know, I've never seen it go down, um, at least since I've been coming to these meetings. And, and this day and age, there's reason to really, really take a good look at this. And if we need officers at all of these instances, rather than, you know, just on the streets as needed, but at all of the other events that they're, that they're used for, whether they're actually needed, whether we could hire private security for some of these things and reduce the overtime, I just think it's something that the town should really consider.
Thank you, we agree. And if we could find four more officers to bring on tomorrow, I think we would, absolutely, but thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Now, did you have an alternate number, Mrs. Spiro? Did you want to propose? I mean, we'll, if you have an alternate number, we'll certainly deal with it.
I guess to not be, um, overly ambitious, I would propose holding even at the accepted budget for fiscal year 20 of $424,698, and work every year to keep moving down instead of up.
Okay, so I'm not sure if I follow what you want to do here.
I would, I would propose, um, revising the, the proposed budget for police overtime to the same as fiscal year 20, $424,698.
Okay, so $424,698? That's, what is it now, Mike? Okay, so it's a production of $40,000?
Forty thousand and change.
You made your motion. Do you have a second to that? Does anybody want a second to that? Second, okay, now, let's, let's vote on that. Mr. Bridges, sir?
Just one final comment on that. The overtime isn't just for the police, it's also for the dispatchers. So just keep that in mind.
Okay. So the, here's what we're going to do. We're going to vote on the substitute motion. If it passes, that'll be the overtime budget. If it doesn't pass, then we're going to go back to the Finance Committee's recommendation and deal with that number, okay? See if the voters want to approve that. Do we need any more discussion on the substitute motion for, I'm going to call it $424,000? Seeing none, all in favor of the substitute motion? Please raise your salmon cards. All those opposed to the substitute motion? Okay. The substitute motion is defeated, okay? Now, we'll go back to the Finance Committee recommendation of $464,000 and the change that was in the thing. Any further discussion on that needed at this point? Hearing none, all in favor of the Finance Committee recommendation? Anyone opposed to it? It carries by far more than a majority. Okay. Now, we are at, that's the budget, we've cleaned that up, okay, good. Now, we have to appropriate, acknowledge what the total budget was. I told you before what the total was. Based on that last vote, apparently it will be. And let's get that final number again. We have to appro, we have to approve that final budget number. And that is $35,248,388. Any discussion in that total? That's just doing the math, adding everything up. All in favor of that budget? Anyone opposed? It carries, it is not, however unanimous. Okay, that takes care of that. Now, that's Article Fifteen, the Town Budget. Article Sixteen, Road Construction. Yes, sir, Mr. Hager. Okay. Mr. Hager's correct. In that budget article, written a little different this year, it also included the provision for a transfer of $25,000, I believe from free cash, am I correct on that? Yeah. So when you're approving that budget, you're also, although it's not spelled out in the $35 million, you're also approving a $25,000 transfer from free cash. Anybody want, maybe we should revote that, just to make sure everybody understands. That's part of the deal that you're signing on for. Okay? So all in favor of the $35 million budget and the $25,000 transfer, signify by raising their salmon card? Anyone opposed to it? Again, it carries by far more than majority. Okay. Thank you for pointing that out, that's a good, that was a good get. Okay. Article Sixteen, Road Construction Repairs and Maintenance. The recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve it as written, and the budget was $36,648. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor? Anybody opposed? Was that an opposition, I saw? No, I guess not. Okay, carries it unanimously. Article Seventeen, Public Access Department. Where is the Public Access Department? The Public Access Department is what's actually videotaping and showing this broadcast. It's our local component of, I guess, Sturbridge TV, as we call it now. Um, and because of budgetary requirements, we have to appropriate the money under a separate article. Although, it's not paid for by taxes or, uh, community access money, it's paid for by you people. by you people on your, on your cable bills. So that's where the money comes from, but you have to acknowledge what the budget is. That's what this is. So it's 70, I'm sorry, strike that. Recommendation of the finance committee is to approve the article as written. Any discussion? Seeing none? Hearing none? All in favor? Anybody opposed to that? Apparently carries unanimously. Article 18, Sturbridge Tourist Association. We have a hotel meals tax, hotel motel tax, which 67% goes to the general fund to help relieve the taxes in general. And the remaining 33.5% gets split into two factions. One is for the tourist association, and the other half is for the betterment committee. Now, usually, those two numbers equal out. This year, you're not going to quite see that because the betterment committee, I think, is holding on to some money, potentially, if you voters approve it, and that later on, they maybe come back to have some further expenditures. So they're not asking to appropriate their full share. But anyhow, the Sturbridge Tourist Association is asking for $176,364. And that means that the, the town's share they've taken in is close to a million bucks here, if you really think about it. It's a lot of money. So it's a pretty good tax. It works for the benefit of the taxpayers and the community. Anyhow, any discussion on this? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Article 19. And again, this is the other half of the, of the, of the tomatoes, so to speak. This one totals up to be, you can listen to all the different things, to $138,000. So they're about, eh, $40,000 short, $38,000 short, something like that, of what the, the full share would be. Don't be surprised if they come back later in the year and ask for some more money, because technically, on the books, they would have $38,000 available to them. So any discussion on the betterment committee appropriation? Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. There is opposition. It carries by majority. Okay. Article 20, capital improvement plan. Now, okay. Most of our articles, not only most, all of our articles so far tonight have been simple majority rule articles. Sometimes, under mass general law, articles are not just majority rule. They have to be 2/3, and occasionally, and I don't think we have any tonight, you may even see something that requires a 9/10 approval. This one requires a 2/3 approval. 2/3. So instead of just being 5149, it would have to be 6733, using percentages. So just be aware of that. The recommendation here is for capital improvement plan. The total is for $1,059,741. Recommendation of the finance committee is to approve the article as written. Purpose here is to provide by some, I guess, call them expensive items, if you will, do some planning on it rather than getting stuck for it. Any, any questions on this? Hearing none? All in favor? All opposed? It carries. It is not, however, unanimous. Far more than 2/3. Article 21, ambulance stabilization fund. Okay. The ambulance stabilization fund is sort of a, if you want to call it a Christmas club for ambulances. You put money away every year, and when you need a new ambulance, hopefully, you've got the money put aside. Can somebody, how much is a new ambulance now like this? What is, what do they run now?
Three hundred.
Yeah, it's very long. So you get, it's a pretty big bite if you're going to buy it all at once. It's easier if you put the money away every single year. Article 21 is to appropriate $60,000 towards that purpose. Recommendation of the finance committee is to approve the article as written. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? It passes, appears to be unanimous. Article 22, the OPEB trust fund. This is, takes some explaining, I guess. This is what the town's obligation for retirement benefits for its employees would be if we had to follow all federal regulations and requirements and programs and so on and so forth. Federal government has made these requirements for us. They have not, however, come up yet with a scheme to help us fund it. They just tell us we have to do it. So we have been, for the past few years, putting money aside towards this retirement benefit situation. We are not, at this point, anywhere near funded, as you can see if you read the article here, but it's to put some money away to keep working on it. And that, this year's sum is $75,000. Recommendation of the finance committee is to approve the article as written. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Carries unanimously. Article 23, tax rate relief. You've seen this in a couple of applications tonight where we've talked about things from free cash. Free cash is the money that's left over from the prior years, tax levy that was not expended, or years in advance of that or in arrears of that. So it's, it's money that's on the books. It's not new taxes. It's just money that was not burnt up, not consumed, for any number of reasons. So they're applying $550,000 in this amount, or seeking to apply it, to just reduce taxes, or our tax rate won't go up as much as it would if you had a higher rate. Recommendation of the finance committee is to approve the article as written. Any discussion on this? Questions? Hearing none? All in favor? Anybody opposed? And the opposition, unanimous. Article 24, the revaluation interim adjustments. As to appropriate $10,000 to the revaluation interim adjustments account, recommendation of the finance committees for $8,000 is to approve that, eight to nothing. Can somebody tell me what that is? That's not the actual, somebody give me an idea what that is. I'm just curious. Wonder anything else?
The reval, this is on, the revaluation and interim adjustment account is for the contractor that we hire to come in and help us set our tax values, our property values. And each year, we set aside a certain amount just to cover that fund.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions about this? Hearing none? All in favor? Anybody opposed? Appears to pass unanimously. Article 25, revolving funds. Spending limits for next year. When I first came onto this job, we had to have a separate article for each and every revolving fund that went through one by one by one, and it took us a lot of time. So we put them all together. And these are funds that people who want to play basketball may chip in 25 bucks to pay for their time in the basketball court, and the money's used to pay the referee or whatever it is they need to do. And you can see the different ones here. Border Health has some hazmat cleanup, Planning Department, you have them all lined out here. Recommendation of the finance committee is to approve the article as written. It's, has no tax impact because you're appropriating the money, but people are paying it back to the community when they either acquire the service or do what needs to be done. Any questions? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Carries, appears to be unanimous. Article 26, water department. Well, the good news is, they say there's no rate increase, so you take that for what it's worth. The total they're seeking for a water department budget is $1,447,288. And this is paid for by people who have town water, okay? It's not paid for by the general public unless you have the town water. So there's no rate increase, so it is what it is. Any questions or discussion of this? Okay. I guess they did. Very good. Okay. No discussion? All in favor? Anyone opposed? No opposed? Okay. Now, what comes in must go out. The next article is the sewer department. And that's for a budget of $2,549,245. Again, no rate increase. It's the same thing as people who use town sewer, pay for it, and that's what they're, they pay for it. It's not a really direct impact on taxes. Any discussion on this? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Article 28, sewer project debt. Over the years, obviously, we've had to put in different sewer projects. As part of that, we've had to borrow money, and we have to pay that money back. Banks are kind of funny like that. The recommendation of the finance committee is to approve the article as written, and there are different articles in there. I can read them if you want, but that's all the existing, I'm sorry, the outstanding debt for this year on these different articles. Any questions? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Seems to carry unanimously. We're on a roll tonight. Article 21, inflow and infiltration study and repair. This is to appropriate $105,000 from the sewer reserve fund balance. Again, this is not going to be, I don't think this, this, Mr. Bridges, this is not a taxable event. This comes out of the, the money that's already approved. Yeah. It's to do a study of the sewer system, basically, and the recommendation is to approve it as written. Any questions or information needed? Yes, sir?
Point of information. Just to restore the cost every year.
Okay. Would you put, if you're going to give us information, please use a microphone. Just make our life a lot easier. Do we have one down here?
Vote in the box at the bottom. This is a recurring cost, so this amount's got to be put aside every year for 10 years consecutively. Just a point of information. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or information? All in favor? Raise your salmon colored cards. Anyone opposed? Seems to pass unanimously. Article 30, cemetery, the records, management, and mapping. Recommendation of the finance committee is to approve the article as written. Any questions? Seeing none? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Article 31, the drone survey and landfill capacity analysis. And this is coming from free cash. Again, this is the, I'll call it the leftover money, if you will, from previous years. So it's not going to be added to the tax levy for this year. Recommendation of the finance committee is to approve the article as written. I've got to ask, what are we taking a drone survey of? Anybody know?
What was the question?
What, what are we taking a drone survey of?
So we're taking, is this on?
Hello?
Try to identify yourself, please. You're taking a drone survey of the landfill that's there now. So it was our cheapest and easiest way to get an actual study of what we have left of the capacity of the landfill.
So it's the landfill itself we're taking?
Landfill itself. Yep. The actual landfill and what we might have left for it.
Thank you. Now we know. Okay. Drone survey. Any questions on this? Recommendation is to approve it. It's nine to nothing. Okay. All in favor? Raise your salmon pink cards. All opposed? Okay. Now, this is a TIF. Article 32. It is a tax increment financing agreement, TIF agreement, TIF. Basically, what it says is, for a certain number of years, and it's set out in the article, you can read it, that the town will accept lesser taxes according to this schedule in hopes of developing, allowing a company to come in and build a facility in Sturbridge and, and to take off. Now, very often, the TIF really does not amount to a whole heck of a lot of money, but it's often a requirement for bonding and different things that the company may want to do. So we're not giving away the ranch here. You can figure it out if you want, but it, there is a reduction of taxes for a number of years. So that's what it is. We have, recommendation of the finance committee is to approve the article as written. Anybody have any questions? Seven to one was the vote. Anyone have any questions on this or need further understanding? Hearing none? All in favor? All opposed? It passes by far more than a majority. Mr. Ragan, do we need, this is a, is this a 2/3?
No.
It's not a 2/3? Okay. Thank you. Nice having counsel here. You can get these questions answered. Okay. Now, we have a bunch of amendments to the zoning code. Now, the long and short of a zoning code is, anytime you address the zoning code, those are all 2/3 amendments, meaning it'll take a 2/3 vote. So we'll go through these one by one, because there's different areas. The first is to amend Chapter 2 of the zoning bylaw, require a 2/3 vote, and allow certain businesses to be added to the, types of businesses, I guess I want to say, that possibly could be allowed in Sturbridge. Now, it's my understanding, and I'm going to stop if I'm wrong, if somebody can correct me, that there has to be a, these are all special permits. Am I right about that?
I'm sorry?
Yeah. I'm on Article 33. These additional things are all special permits, are they not?
These are all, not necessarily. They're all definitions that are being added somewhere permitted.
Okay. Okay. Well, first question I have is for the planning board. Requirement that before they can, we can vote on these things, planning board itself has to have a meeting and has to act on this. Could some representative of the planning board, Mr. Blanchard, I guess, give us the...
Right. Charlie Blanchard, 26, Fakwa Road, Chairman of the Planning Board. On Article 33, this is, the moderator said, just to amend, Chapter 2 of the zoning bylaw. This article proposes to insert new definitions for uses that are being added to different chapters in later articles. The planning board held a public hearing on the proposed changes on April 14, 2020, and the planning board voted seven to zero unanimously to support the changes as written.
Thank you, Mr. Blanchard. Okay. So we've passed that, that hurdle. Anybody have any recommendation of the finance committees to approve the article as writ? Excuse me. Anybody have any questions about adding these additions? Hearing none? All in favor? All opposed? It passes, it appears to be unanimous, from my view. Okay.
Okay.
Your anticipation, just hold on. We'll get to you, Mr. Blanchard. Just hold on a sec.
Okay.
Article 34 is to amend Chapter 7 of the zoning bylaw. Again, this will be 2/3, and again, we need the planning board to give us their action.
This article proposes to add uses to Chapter 7, commercial district, to add some of the recently defined terms as uses. Also, the changes would allow the planning board to grant a special permit for building heights greater than 35 feet or three stories, which is also consistent with recent changes to other chapters. The planning board held a public hearing on the proposed changes on April 14, 2020, and the planning, the planning board voted seven to nothing to support the changes as written.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions about this?
Brandon Goodwin, 56, McGillopol Road. Could you explain where that commercial district is in terms of the 35 feet? Is that, you know, in the tourist area outside, you know, from the village?
I'm sorry, I'm having a difficulty hearing you.
Sorry. Just thanks. Can you explain the section where this 35 feet would apply?
Okay. Mr. Blanchard, could you help us with that, perhaps?
The commercial district is basically around, along Route 131. Is there another section too? I guess that's, in, in Route 20 on the other side, in the area of Route 20 that isn't the commercial tourist district. Commercial tourist district is basically the Fiskdale area, Route 131 and Route 20 are the other commercial districts.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have another comment?
So does that mean east of the village on, on 20 is in that?
Yes.
Okay. So between east of the village to the pike, which is the entrance area, we could have buildings that are 35 feet right on 20? buildings that are 35 feet right on 20?
Right.
Okay. Or, yeah, or taller. Okay. That was what I'm trying to get my head around.
Yeah. It is. I mean, you know, basically, the 35 feet stays as the height by right. It takes a special permit to go beyond that 35 feet. This is consistent with what we've passed in other areas, including the Commercial Two District. No, I'm sorry, that's the, that's the one we're doing tonight. The Village Gateway District, we did that on June 6, 2013, so this has been done in other sections as well.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I would like to amend that and pull that line out.
I'm just having a hard time hearing you.
Sorry, this thing's damn thick. I would like to amend that article.
You'd like to what?
I'd like to make a motion to amend that article to pull that line out.
I'm, well--
I want to amend the article.
Okay, and what way do you want to amend it?
I would like to pull out item I.
Okay, well, fortunately or unfortunately--
That's J, sorry, that's J.
We're now, at this point, we're already voting on the main motion, which is the Finance Committee's recommendation. If for some reason that was not to pass, if it passes, it passes. If it doesn't pass, yeah, we would go back and entertain your motion. We're acting on their motion at this point. So it's kind of, if you wanted to file a substitute motion, I think that should have been filed prior to we getting this far along in the discussion. So let's see what happens with the main vote. If it doesn't pass, you want to come back and deal with something else, we could talk about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sound effects. Gary Galanek, Lake Road. Just a point of clarification, Charlie, you said, I thought you said, a special permit to exceed the 35 feet, but would it not be a variance? And what's the special permit granting authority? But it would be a variance, correct?
Well, it would be a special permit--
Please speak into the microphone.
Granted by the Planning Board.
Not a variance.
Not a variance. It wouldn't go to the ZBA. This would be a request made to the Planning Board, they'd give reasons why they had to exceed that 35 feet, and that Planning Board would take a vote on it.
Mr. Blanchard, please speak into the microphone, some of the people can't hear you.
Okay. So this would be granted by a special permit issued by the Planning Board. The proponent would have to come to the Planning Board, explain the additional height they would like over the 35 feet, and what that reason would be, and then the Planning Board would vote on it.
Okay. Okay. So anyone else want to speak to this recommendation? Okay, here's what we're going to do. We're going to vote on this. If for some reason it does not pass, if somebody has another recommendation, we will accept it at that time, but if this passes, that's going to be the end of it, that's the end of this discussion. Okay, all in favor, this is a two-thirds vote. All in favor, raise your cards. All opposed. It passes by far more than two-thirds. Okay, Article 35. Again, another zoning amendment, to amend Chapter 8 of the zoning bylaw, a two-thirds vote required. Mr. Blanchard, did the Planning Board meet on this one?
We did. So this article proposes to add craft beverage business with tasting room as a permitted use in order to be consistent with the newly adopted definition. The Planning Board held a public hearing on the proposed changes on April 14, 2020, and the Planning Board voted seven to nothing in support, to support the changes as written.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this proposed change? Hearing none, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Appears to pass unanimously. Article 36. Another zoning change, amend Chapter 9 of the zoning bylaw, two-thirds vote required.
Again, this article proposes to add language that would allow the Planning Board to grant a special permit for building heights greater than 35 feet or three stories, which is, again, consistent with other changes in other chapters. The Planning Board held a public hearing on the proposed changes on April 14, 2020, and the Planning Board voted seven to zero to support the changes as written.
Thank you. Any questions on this? Any more information needed? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed. Carries by far more than two-thirds. Amend Chapter 10 of the zoning bylaw. Again, a two-thirds vote. Mr. Blanchard.
Okay, this article proposes to update the permitted uses to be current. A few updates have taken place since 1965. Additionally, this article proposes to add language that would allow the Planning Board to grant a special permit for the building heights greater than 35 feet or three stories, again, consistent with other changes in the chapters. The Planning Board held a public hearing on the proposed changes on April 14, 2020, and the Planning Board voted seven to nothing to support the changes as written.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments or questions on this? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed. Seems to carry unanimously. Article 38. Again, another zoning bylaw change. This is to amend Chapter 11. Again, two-thirds vote. Mr. Blanchard.
Right. Similar to the other, this article proposes to update the permitted uses to add some of the recently defined terms. Additionally, the article proposed to add language to allow the Planning Board to grant a special permit for building heights greater than 35 feet or three stories. The Planning Board held a public hearing on the proposed changes on April 14, 2020, and the Planning Board voted seven to zero to support the changes as written.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions about this? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed. Seems to carry unanimously. Find the page here. Yeah. Okay, Article 39. Again, zoning bylaw. Amend Chapter 19 of the zoning bylaw. Two-thirds vote. Let's see here. It says, "These proposed changes will update the table to reflect that the Planning Board would have the ability to grant a special permit for a height greater than 35 feet or three stories. This is reflected by the addition of the footnotes on the height dimensions." That's what this says. That sound right?
Yes, that's right.
Okay.
Okay.
Was there a hearing held on this, Mr. Blanchard?
Was this held at the same time as the others? Okay. So the Planning Board held a public hearing on the proposed changes on April 14, 2020, and the Planning Board voted seven to nothing to support the changes as written.
Okay, thank you. Any other addition, information needed, questions? All in favor? All opposed. It carries, it is not unanimous, but it's far more than two-thirds. Article 40. Property Tax Exemption for Veterans and Their Spouses. Okay. It's to accept the provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22nd G, to extend the limit of tax exemptions provided to veterans and their spouses, as set forth there. Recommendation is of the Finance Committee is to approve the article as written. The vote was nine to nothing. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed. Carries, it passes unanimously. Oops. Hold on. Okay. Article 41. Property Tax Exemption for Gold Star Parents. It's to, that they, recommendation of the Finance Committee, that they take no action in this article. Now, when you have an article that says, "Take no action," you don't need a vote to approve that "take no action." Take no action means just that, we're going to take no action, and that will be the end of it. If somebody has a substitute motion, this would be the time to file it, if they don't, this thing will die on the vine, so to speak. Yes, sir?
Robert Brier, 50 Arnold Road, Fiskdale Village within the town of Sturbridge. I would like to bring this article to the floor for a vote, Mr. Moderator, because it's important to those who have lost their families, their sons, daughters, that town do something for them as a way of saying, "Thank you. We appreciate the service that you lost, member of your family." And we have such a family in town now that would, this would help them very much.
Thank you.
So I'd like to make a motion where you address the article.
Okay, so you're filing a substitute motion to approve the article as written, the way it was originally written.
Please.
Okay, do we have a second to that?
Second.
Okay, we have seconds. Now we have an article and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Mr. Brier, let's see if someone else wants, something wants to say. Yes, ma'am? We've got somebody in the back, Mr. Brier, so why don't you? You can't grab the seats right there, so--
Why don't you move on down a little bit?
Joanna Shapiro, 50 Westwood Drive. Nothing but respect for Gold Star families. I just have a question. I don't understand why currently, you know, we do do something for Gold Star families right now, and Gold Star parents receive a $400 property tax reduction, and the state reimburses us $225, so we're given, you know, a bonus, almost half of that. What I'm confused about is, it says if the article's approved, then we will know, not be reimbursed for any of that amount from the state. Is that true? Will we still at least get the $225, or do we no longer get any reimbursement?
Okay. Can we get somebody from Ms. Berry, or somebody to verify this tax thing? Somebody help us out with this?
If you vote to have this exemption in place, it removes, they are no longer filing for the 22 clause, so we would no longer get reimbursed. This is a full real estate exemption that the town would not get reimbursed for.
Okay, so, you know, I'll be, I'll be voting with the Finance Committee to take no action on this, because I think, you know, we're doing a nice thing now, giving, giving that reduction. I don't see that a full exemption is necessary, that, you know, nothing to go towards schools or police or anything else. I realize they've, you know, had quite a hardship in their family, their adult child has passed, which is a horrible thing, but I think it's prudent to stick with the amount that the state supports, and that we get at least some reimbursement for it, rather than totally negating that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else care to be heard? There were some other hands up, I thought. Yes, sir? Yeah, I got that.
Jared Burns, 13 Stony Brook Drive. I'm a veteran myself, and at first I was not sure about this particular article, because we do already have a tax exemption in place. But this was approved by the Massachusetts General Laws. It's an option for the towns to adopt. Certainly, the same exemption is offered to the families themselves and to the descendants or spouses of the fallen soldiers. But I think the parents are often overlooked, a lot of expenses that may not be, as a parent, for example, paying back student loans, or if the parents have become the caretakers for a grandchild. I've seen, I know families that have gone through this, and the parents are often in as much hardship as a surviving spouse, if there is one. So I think the total amount of money here is negligible. I mean, we have approved more for the drone survey than would impact the tax revenue for the town, and I think it's necessary. I think Sturbridge should lead the way, because other towns may be adopting this in the matter, that we don't get reimbursed a couple hundred dollars is really insignificant when you consider, the point of the whole tax system is for members to contribute to the common good, and I don't see how you could ask for more of a contribution than the life of your daughter or son. That debt, to me, that debt to society is paid, and we don't need to collect any more.
Thank you. Okay, let's keep order here. Let's keep order. Mr. Brier, just hold on. Anyone else want to be heard? Yes, sir? We'll give you a chance, Mr. Brier, let some other people speak first.
Bruce McGuire, Walker Pond, Sturbridge, Mass. I also am a veteran. My family suffered, we had a Gold Star family, a Gold Star member of our family in World War II, in Stafford Springs, Connecticut. My twin brothers blood-soaked the battlefields of Vietnam in 1969. I knew the young man in town that died. He died in a death, a very heroic death, and a very fine person. I think this article needs to pass, and my heart goes out to all family members and veterans.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else before we get Mr. Brier again? Mr. Brier, the microphone is yours.
Many of you may not realize who the Gold Star mothers are. When I was a little boy, and that was a long time ago in Sturbridge, the most respected person in the town of Sturbridge was a Gold Star mother, and at the time, we had five of them. They got to ride in the parade, somebody drove them, and the applause, there's more applause for a Gold Star mother. Gold Star mother is usually, is a woman who has lost a son, a daughter, in war, and not much is done about them. There's a, the day they find out that that person has died, there's a lot of sympathy, and then they're just, oh, they're out there. In the particular case that I'm thinking of, we lost a soldier in Afghanistan, not that many years ago, until I start counting the years up. I had to, I would call it an honor, to visit his grave down in Virginia this summer. Unfortunately, his mother also lost her husband several years ago, who died, I understand, of a heart attack. So now here's a grave with her son and her husband side by side. Nothing, probably most people don't know who they are or who she is, but I think it's the least we can do, whether it's her or any other woman who loses their son in war or their daughter in war, to not have to pay taxes on home. She's probably, as any woman has now to foot the bill for a house that probably was in debt, that her husband was helping pay for. I just feel bad for anybody in that situation. So if you put yourself in it, if you had a son and they were killed in war as he was, you would hope somebody could help you out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sir, did you want to address this?
Jay Gormley, 5 Shampoo. This will only apply to residential, correct, not a commercial property tax?
You have to ask the tax people. The question is, does it just apply to residential?
If it's only residential, now, we can't apply to commercial property tax.
No, it's just the domicile.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else want to be heard on this? We had a pretty good discussion of it. Does somebody else wants to be heard? Yes, sir?
Rob Sertie, 124 Ledmine Lane. I understand this is only for one family living in town? Is that correct? Yeah? Okay.
There's currently--
Currently. Well, that's kind of where I'm going with it, and I couldn't imagine somebody losing, you know-- And I couldn't imagine somebody losing, you know, me losing a family member, anybody else losing a family member. It'd be such a tragedy. But I do, I do want to get some information from the FinCom here, why it was seven to two to take no action. They seem to have a pretty good grasp on, sometimes, what happens financially in this town. And I think you may have had a point there where it's just one currently living in town. And what's the rationale behind a seven to two vote to take no action on it?
Okay, right now, the vote we're dealing with is a substitute motion filed by Mr. Brier to appropriate, to approve this article as written. So the select, I'm sorry. The Finance Committee's motion to take no action is just that. They're taking no action. They're just sitting there. So Mr. Brier has come forward and filed a motion. If his motion passes, that'll be what the town will do. If the motion doesn't pass, then I guess we go back to the Finance Committee's motion for no action.
So at that time, would it be appropriate to ask their, why they voted the way they did on it?
I can't hear you, sir.
If it does, if Mr. Brier's substitute motion does not get passed, and it goes back to the FinCom's motion of-
Yes.
-that I would be able to ask them what their opinion was on it?
I would think it would be the last action tonight, yes, on this. Okay. Anyone else want to be heard on this? Yes, sir.
Russell Chamberlain, 161 Cedar Street. Just a point of information.
Could you speak into the microphone?
If somebody moves into town tomorrow, or after July 1st, whenever this takes effect, that's going to affect them. If somebody buys a house, or is there a parameter? It's just a point of information. Do they have to live in towns for five years, or 10 years? Or is it a, somebody born, raised in Sturbridge?
If you pass this exemption clause, any Gold Star parent who moves into town can file for a full exemption.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we are now, yes, yes, ma'am.
Joanna Shapiro, 50, Westwood Drive. I think a town official was trying to answer Mr. Searney's question on how many families there are currently. Was it more than one? I don't know. She was stepping up, but then was talked over, but. And then my other comment is, I, I mirror his question. I don't see, I don't understand why we can't hear now from the Finance Committee why they would not vote to approve this. I think it's valid to hear that now, before we vote to approve this, possibly.
Well, I think that's, that's probably a fair question. Is somebody from the Finance Committee in which is to speak? Ms. Neal. Returning Neal.
I think I'm turned on. Actually, we were, even though the vote was seven to two, I think that we were actually pretty split about this because, well, first of all, we did have a number of questions. You know, there was a question, actually, that was brought up. What if both parents lived in the town of Sturbridge, but were divorced and each owned a, a home? And, you know, there were other questions as well. I think tonight we did get some more information, though, and we did actually have another vote, though it still did not pass. But now, I, I think that we did get some new information that, that even though that it's a, it's a parent and not a spouse, who obviously would have probably a, a good deal of financial stress. But we did also hear that, you know, that sometimes the Gold Star parents, if the child is fairly young, that there might still be student loans out there, that they still own a house, that they may be taking care of, or helping take care of any grandchildren, or the children of the, of the deceased soldier. So again, we were split, and, and honestly, I think that if it came to a vote tonight, some of us may change our minds. But I think in viewing it from a town aspect, we thought that it could be perhaps a little expensive if there were several of them. But I think it's hard, it was a hard decision for us, and I, and I think it's a hard decision for everyone. But at the end of the day, I think everyone has to do what they think is, is right by the Gold Star parents.
And, and I certainly don't enjoy speaking in a way that seems to be against a Gold Star family. I would like to say, however, that student loans have been mentioned twice, and that's a non-issue. If, if someone dies serving their country, those student loans are no longer-
I think those were parent loans. Those were loans the parent had taken out.
Oh, the loans parents took on?
Yes.
Rather than loans that the students took on themselves? Okay, so not the students' loans themselves? Okay, thanks for explaining why the Finance Committee would vote against this.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else at this point? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Miriam McGuire, 111 Walker Pond Road. And I think one other thing that may make this a little bit trickier is because people that are on the Finance Committee have recused themselves from probably speaking out because they have, know these, know the Gold Star family. And I think that has something to do with, so they were very professional in stepping back and looking at it. So I think that's why it happened. But given to the point before about the loans or whatever else, when you have a child that dies, and they're 23 years old, and they've given every single thing, and sacrificed every single thing, plus their family, and die in battle, you know, killed by a sniper, and then you come back, and not only are you trying to put your life together, but you, you have incredible debts that you took out to put your son through the Citadel, which is where he went. And there's just, I think it's a small token. If we're paying so much money for a drone to fly over the waste center, I think this is a small token. It involves one family that, or one person in the town that probably won't even be here longer than four years. I, I think it's the least we can do, and I think Massachusetts in general dropped the ball because this came, this came out for the whole state, but nobody was funding it. The individual towns are funding it. That's why some towns on the Cape are funding this. And I, you know, I think we should step up to the plate, and I think we should, I think we should do this. I think it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Just one, just one correction here. The issue is, are we going to appropriate? The article is written as proposed by Mr. Brier. The, the psychology of the Finance Committee is not the, is not the point here, okay? Why they voted, or why they didn't say, or why they did this is not the issue. The issue is, should we appropriate this substitute motion? Yea or nay, is really what it boils down to. I think we're getting off on a, on a sidetrack. Yes, sir? I hear it clicking, yeah?
I'd just like to comment on the-
Please identify yourself.
The characterization of the Finance Committee, and that being the characterization that was just made, I don't feel as accurate. I think what we felt, a number of us on the Finance Committee, as sympathetic as we are towards this, I think what we felt was, and we expected perhaps, that the Veterans Agent would come to the floor with a proposal, as being discussed right now, and that we, as the Finance Committee, were probably, didn't feel comfortable, many of us, recommending to the town that they spend their money. We felt that the proposal shouldn't come from us, because we hold sway. Our motion, I mean, the main motion is from us, and we didn't feel comfortable doing that, doing that. So we felt if it came from the floor, then the town could vote objectively whether or not they wanted to do that, without the influence of the Finance Committee holding sway in that situation. I don't know if that's clear to everybody, but that's how I felt, and I think that's how many of us felt. We hold an influential position, and it would be inappropriate for you to trust us on that, and it should fall back to you as to whether or not you wanted to do that for the Gold Star parent. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's try to keep this to the issues of, should we approach, approve this or not? The Finance Committee's thinking, nice to know, we've heard it. I don't think we're going to pillory them for what they decided to do at this point. The issue is, do we want to approve this or not? Yea or nay, that's what it boils down to. So any other discussion here? Anybody else want to be heard on this? Okay, all in favor of Mr. Brier's motion, signified by raising their salmon pink cards. All those opposed to it carries by far more than a majority. So the substitute motion passes. We will not be dealing, therefore, with the motion for no action filed by the Finance Committee. Okay. Make a note here. Okay, Article 42. Zoning of Cedar Street. Two-thirds vote required. Okay, Mr. Blanchard.
Charlie Blanchard, 26 Falkway Road. This article proposes to amend the zoning map to change approximately nine, 0.917, slightly under one acre, of land on the westerly side of Cedar Street and the northerly side of 420 Main Street, from suburban residential to commercial tourist district. The Planning Board held a public hearing on the proposed changes on June 9th, 2020. The Planning Board voted seven to nothing to support the proposed zoning map as petition, uh, change as petitioned.
Before you go, Mr. Blanchard, didn't we have an article on this a couple meetings ago?
Yeah, the previous article last year actually was proposing to change over 50 acres to this commercial area. And the proponent came back with a petition to change a much smaller portion of it, abutting directly to the parking lot. The whole idea here is to create more parking spaces toward the back of the property, where the existing parking is, rather than putting additional parking in the front of the building, where we have that grassy area that can be seen from Route 20. So this has been reviewed by the Planning Board. It has the proper setbacks. We've reviewed ideas like the, the lighting being concentrated on it and so forth, and the Planning Board does support this change.
To be fair to the voters, though, that article was defeated at the previous meeting.
But this is, this is a substantially different article-
I hear you, but the previous article was defeated.
Because it's only nine tenths of an acre.
Okay, thank you.
Right.
Any other comments on this article? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Dan Gonya, Table Three Restaurant Group, representing them in Porchlight Investments. I just want to make a quick correction for Charlie. That was, was actually three acres last year, not 50 acres, and we've reduced it by, you know, more than two-thirds. So I just want to thank everybody for coming tonight and, and hopefully supporting this article. I really think it's a time, you know, when local businesses really need the town's support, because the town is certainly going to need local businesses to be here when this pandemic is over. Prior to the pandemic, our business in both the restaurant segment and the function segments, its weddings and the like, was very strong. And we have full confidence that when we return to normal, it will remain that way. We feel positive about the future, and we also feel positive to continue our investment plans and keep them in place during this period. In 2015, we opened the barn at White Farm for weddings and functions, and in that time, we've really had some great success and essentially approached a full-capacity situation in that building. And because of this, we've made plans to expand into Building Two, which is the building right next to the barn, and create additional function space for approximately 125 people. It's just not our activity, though, that's placed a high demand on this parking lot. We have tenants, Excel, NSS, Ye Country Mercantile, and we also have parking agreements and support the veterinary clinic, Cedar Street Grill and Cafe. All of these businesses are dependent upon parking and sharing agreements. Our plans for continued expansion and our tenant small businesses are all dependent on having adequate parking. Adjacent to our parking lot, Porchlight Investments, that's the company who owns all the real estate, also owns, as we had mentioned, the three acres of suburban residential land that we purchased when we purchased the 420 properties in 2014. To facilitate some additional parking, we're asking that a smaller portion, one-third of the parcel, and closing to the existing parking, be allowed a zoning change to commercial tourists. At last year's annual meeting, we presented a more aggressive plan, requesting a rezoning of the entire three acres to commercial tourists, using a larger portion for parking. So we're now dropping from over 100 spaces down to approximately 70. That plan was unanimously approved by the planning and other pertinent boards, as this one was. During last year's annual meeting, though, several of the abutters expressed concern about the possibility of us developing the entire parcel and the loss of wooded space if the zoning change was made on the entire parcel. We listened to their concerns, and we sought to find a compromise so we could move forward with our plans for expanding our businesses while addressing the concerns of our neighbors. Our revised plan requests that only 0.917 of the three-plus acres for rezoning, for parking, and that parking envelope fits totally within that 0.917, with some buffer zones around the requested area. There's really only one residence that the plan, or the parking lot, would come close to, and that's 15 Cedar Street, owned by Arnie and Vivian Beeman. And they fully support the plan as presented, stating that Table Three always does top-notch work, and they're fully confident that we'll do a great job with the, with the property. The other two acres remain suburban residential, remains fully wooded and undisturbed. We really feel that this revised plan represents the best compromise, balancing both the needs of the many businesses that depend on this lot for parking. The local residents in the town will benefit greatly from the increased investment and revenue generated by our proposal. Porchlight and Table Three have been in operation now for 10 years in Sturbridge, and work very hard to be a good neighbor, a great employer, and a strong partner to the town of Sturbridge. We've been very fortunate throughout our time in business in this town to enjoy the great support of the residents and the town's government. Tonight, we are hoping we can count on that continued support. And again, I'd like to thank everyone who came out tonight to support the town, and I would like to thank the town for its continued support of our businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else care to be heard on this? Okay, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve the article as written. Seven in favor, one opposed. All in favor of the, this is a two-thirds vote. Raise your cards. All those opposed, raise your cards. It passes by far more than two-thirds. It was not unanimous, however. Article 43. Community, maybe we have a typo here. Preservation Little League Lighting Proposal. Again, it's another community preservation fund to appropriate $107,795. I'm sorry. Let me say it again. $107,791, okay? For putting lighting at the Little League field. Okay, recommendation of the Finance Committee was five in favor and three opposed. Any discussion on this? This comes, again, not directly from taxes, but from that, I'll call it, sur fund on top of the taxes that the Community Preservation Committee is allowed to charge every year. Any discussion? Hearing none? You have a question, sir? Please come forward. I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Please, please speak up.
I'd like to discuss.
That's what you have to get here for.
Very good, thank you. My name is Ed Neal, and I'm at Three Old Village Road in Sturbridge, and I'm a member of the Community Preservation-
Why don't you get closer to the microphone, Ms. Neal?
I'm a member of the Community Preservation Committee and also the Horsing Partnership. It was voted in the CPC, six to one vote in favor. The one vote was me who opposed, and here's the reason why. Back in 2018, we approved $177,000 for this project, which is, you know, the ball field that is behind the town barn? The Little League field? Well, they, back then, they wanted to spend the 175 to put in four light poles. Now, that's continued all the way through October of last year, when the- Now, that's continued all the way through October of last year when the electricity, electric energy ended up submitting a contract to the town for $175,000. That contract was signed in December of 2019. There was a change order that was requested of the company after that, and a change order was drafted to the town. And the change order was to change from metal halide lights to LED lights and for new poles. In order to do that, they had to, they came up with extras of, in essence, the 170, the $170,000 that's being requested. So the question is, do you believe that it is cost-effective--
Could you speak into the microphone, please, so we can hear you?
Do you believe it's cost-effective to pay $274,600 to put up four light poles at the Little League field, or whether that vote has already passed?
Okay. Anyone else care to be heard on this?
Katie Phillips, 128 Paradise Lane. I'm also a member of the CPC, the Rec Committee, and also the Sturbridge Little League. So this proposal, when it first came by and was passed, the price that we received from the vendor was that $178,000 number. We went out to bid, we received three bids. The person that came in with the lowest bid was offered a contract. When he came in and looked at the setting, they realized the soil conditions are worse than they had thought because we, in, in order to get the project going, we'd have to do a study to figure out the soil conditions. So we'd have to delay the project by coming in, getting the funding for the study, doing the study, then coming back asking for funds for the project. We thought, we went in, the vendors came in, gave us a quote based on their best knowledge for what it would cost. When they came in, did the digging, they realized it was a lot more extensive than they thought it would be. This number you're seeing is the cost it would be if all these items were taken in terms of LED lights and so on. These are just proposals from the existing vendor. If we go forward, we would have to go out to bid as we do with any other project. So this is, we would, I doubt we'll spend this much money, but the reason we're asking for this today is so we don't have to come back to a third town meeting asking for more funds to fund these lights. We're, we're trying to move forward, saying this is the maximum amount this project will cost. Hopefully you support it so we can move forward with this project that's been in the works for many years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else care to be heard on this? Do I see another hand?
Kate Alexander, 317 The Trail. I wanted to speak in support of this as well. I've been in town for, I grew up here, but one of the things that reoccurs at all these town meetings that we attend every year is the need for recreational space. And in this case, it would also allow us to host different types of tournaments, allow us to play into the evening where we can host more teams. That doesn't just put kids on ball fields. When you attract able to host tournaments and do things like that, you're also bringing people in that might be staying at a hotel. They might be eating at your restaurants. They are traveling, they might be getting gas, they might be doing other things. I think that there's a bigger picture than just putting up four light posts, and I wanted to vote and speak in support of it.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this? Okay, hearing none. I think we're ready for a vote. Recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve this, five to three. Okay, all in favor? Raise their cards. All opposed? It passes by far more than 50%, so it passes. Okay, Article 44. And this is the last article of the meeting. Before you guys all get up and start traipsing out of here, what we want to do is, we want to get you out by the last row first, second to the last row, and like that. We're still trying to observe some spacing requirements here to get everybody out of here safely. Before we get to the article, I want to thank everybody for coming. I think you're all very brave to show up, given everything that's going on in society right now, and I want to thank you for being here tonight. Okay, Article 44, Tax Rate Relief from Stabilization. This is money that's going to come out of the stabilization fund, again, as we did in another article, to reduce the tax, the tax levy. Now, do we have a, do we have a substitute motion on this or a motion? You gave it to me. Give me a minute to catch up with it. Okay, then. Everybody hands me stuff, and I throw them away mostly. I think throwing them away is the best idea, don't you? Nobody's laughing.
$70,000.
How much is it?
$570,000.
Five, seven, zero?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody know how much we have in stabilization?
I believe it was a million and a half? Barbara?
Before this motion? So we have roughly $2 million, $1,009,000 change, something like that? Okay. It's just good to know we're spending this money, what we're spending it on. Okay, so the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to appropriate $570,000 from stabilization to reduce taxes. And do we have a second on that? Because this is a new motion. Second? Any discussion on it? Okay. Hearing no discussion? All in favor signify by raising your salmon cards. Thank you very much. All opposed? It seems to carry, I'm going to say unanimously. Okay, very good. Well, that's the conclusion of the meeting. We need a motion to adjourn. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming.